Right on the left, three on the right. Lock and load. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to our regular meeting for, uh, this is Tuesday, March the 6th. Uh, for our regular town council meeting, for the record, the time is seven o'clock. Uh, we'll move along as rapidly as we can. Uh, first item we got is to approve the minutes of our February 6th meeting. Does the Chair here motion most of the minutes be approved, or are there corrections?
So made.
Second.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded, we approve the minutes. Any discussion?
On page twenty-five.
Okay. What is on page twenty-five?
Uh, the top paragraph. She noted that the depreations, uh, contract was for thirteen thousand sentences. And then the rest of the words are contract, and we, that had the contract. That just needs to be, I think. It's a, it's a global.
Okay, with that being done, uh, all in favor of approving the minutes, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? The minutes are approved. Okay, the first item on our agenda is four A, which is a resolution of recognition for Becky Bass. Uh, back in the first part of February, I was contacted by Mike Ruffin, who was our first town manager, telling me that we were on the cusp of celebrating our fortieth anniversary as a, as a council manager, former government, and that the last person who was still with us who was involved in that was Becky. And he thought we ought to do something to recognize the event and the person. Uh, with the help of, uh, Joanne over at the graphic, she helped me run down some dates on this thing. And as far as we can tell, Becky was the first, uh, woman elected to the town council, which was good. So, we thought we'd create a resolution for Becky and get it framed up and carried to her. I understand she's in sort of poor health right now. Uh, let me read this, as we have to read all resolutions. Uh, it's a resolution of twenty eighteen zero six, resolution of recognition of Rebecca Becky Bass. Whereas the Town of Nashville is always appreciative of those who choose to serve for the betterment of the town. And whereas Becky, Rebecca Becky Bass, was the first woman elected to the Town of Nashville Board of Commissioners in nineteen seventy-five, and faithfully served the Town of Nashville for twelve years as commissioner and town, and, and council member from seventy-five until nineteen eighty-seven. And whereas Becky Bass rendered during her term of office valuable services to the Town of Nashville and the citizens thereof, and was instrumental in converting the Town of Nashville to the council manager formal government. And whereas Becky Bass also served the citizens of Nashville through her work with L.R. Bass and Son, the Nashville Fire Department Ladies Auxiliary, the Nash County Clerk of Court, and numerous other business and organizations. And whereas it is fitting that the Town of Nashville shows appreciation when one has rendered such valuable services. Now therefore being resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Nashville is hereby recognized that Becky Bass has been a good, loyal, and faithful public servant of the Town of Nashville. Now therefore be it further resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Nashville expresses deep appreciation on behalf of the citizens of Nashville for the valuable service which she has provided this town, adopted the sixth day of March twenty eighteen, with appropriate signatures and attestations. Does the Chair here motion approve the resolution?
So made.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, approve the resolutions. Any discussion? If there being none, all in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, we'll get that finalized and move it on. You're, you're, okay. Okay, uh, next section B of four is a consideration of street and special events permit applications, of which there are three. Uh, at our, at our public hearing on Wednesday night, we heard comments for all three items, the Twenty Second Annual Blooming Festival, and the Church on the Rise Mission's color run, and a Nashville Creek Side music series, to which there was no opposition and very little comment. Uh, does the Chair here motion approve all of these considerations?
So made.
Collectively?
Sir. As long as everything's in order, I move approve all three at once.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, here we go. Okay, now that we hear motion four, the actual approval.
So made.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and there's a second over here. Okay, with all that said, it does, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the, uh, three items, uh, for street events, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no?
Yes.
Okay, it is done. You'll notify the participants. Okay, item C is a consideration of ordinance amendment twenty eighteen zero four, text amendment to the Land Use Regulation of Chapter Or, the Chapter of Ordinance of the Town of Nashville, which deals with the issue concerning, I've lost it. Let's see. Which deals with the, uh, issue of, of a, uh, request of some high-density residential dwellings in the B-two zoning district, on which we had a, had a hearing last week. And there was no opposition of, some questions, but no opposition. And the planning board met thereafter and gave us a unanimous recommendation for it. And what we will do, if you approve it, is change our, our ordinance in section eighteen one-one-two for script of districts by adding a, a B-two central business district. And in all the uses that they detail, we'll include some high-density dwellings. Uh, so that's now included. And then there's all the rest of the material that our planner has added in, uh, which you'll need to read. Does the Chair here motion approve this consideration?
So made.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, approve the ordinance amendment. Uh, is there any discussion?
Mayor, even with passing this resolution tonight, uh, we still, any, any potential construction or anything that goes on, we still have to come back through the planning board and through this body.
Yeah, to get a special use permit. Yeah. You'll still get a sign off on it.
I, I have a question.
Further comment?
Have, have, excuse me, have there been any specific inquiries?
No, ma'am. Same thing that Ms. Fraser asked last week, that's all I have to say about that. Just people looking and asking questions of what things they can do in other areas.
My concern is still the traffic flood until things are settled down in town with the courthouse construction.
Okay, well, that should pass away in the next two or three months, hopefully. Okay, uh, further comment? Okay, all in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, it is done. Uh, item D is a certificate of sufficiency presented to us by the clerk as we asked, as we empowered her last week, uh, to determine the correct ownership of the properties for that we're about to annex. It was given to us by the Smith family, uh, and she has returned a satisfactory certificate. Does the Chair here motion we, we receive the certificate of sufficiency as presented by the clerk?
So made.
It's been moved and?
Second.
Seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? All right, the next item is related to that, we need to fix a date for the hearing, uh, for a public hearing, uh, for the annexation of the same property. And we have a resolution to that effect, so let me read the resolution. It says, "A resolution to fix a date of public hearing on request of annexation pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash thirty-one. Whereas a petition requesting annexation of the area described herein has been received. And whereas the Town, the Nashville Town Council has by resolution directed the town clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition. And whereas certification by the town clerk has that a sufficiency of the petition has been made. Now therefore being resolved by Nashville Town Council of the Town of Nashville, North Carolina, that section one, a public hearing on the question of annexation of the area described herein will be held at the Nashville Town Council chambers at seven P.M. on March twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen. In section two, the area proposed for annexation is described as follows. And the prop owners are the Town of Nashville. And the, uh, area of annexation has got many corners and many angles. It goes on for a number of pages, which I will not read." Okay, with all that having been done, uh, section three, "The notice of the public hearing shall be published in the Nashville Graphic. The newspaper has general circulation in the Town of Nashville at least ten days prior to the date of the public hearing, with appropriate signatures and attestations." Does the Chair here motion approve the resolution, the resolution for public hearing for annexation?
So made.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, approve the resolution. Is there any discussion? If there being none, all in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? It is done. Okay, the next item deals with the parking situation where Rick Thompson, uh, made a presentation the other night to get some designated spaces for veterans. And we empowered our planner to work with Rick and others, and he needed to find some that were needed, that, that we could use. And it designated six spaces. Uh, one is spaced on West Washington Street on the south side, which is somewhere to the, to the west of the, uh, Christian faith ministries. And it'll be one at Town Hall, one at Glover Park, one spaced at Stony Greek, and two here at the library. Uh, does the Chair here motion approve his recommendation? By changing the, by meaning the ordinances to include reserved parking spaces for veterans, as you see on the next page. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? You'll notify Rick, he's got his places. Okay, the next item, let's see, we're down to G. The next item deals with, um, an ordinance, twenty eighteen oh six, the ordinance of meaning the text of the Town of Nashville Code of Ordinance is, uh, chapter eight, businesses, article five, municipal service district. During discussion and consideration of next officio council member appointment to the Municipal Service District Advisory Board. Uh, and, uh, Kate Burns volunteered to serve on that person. And if you look at the ordinance... Where's that? G? Yeah, I'm getting there. Yeah, I'm getting there. So we're gonna have an amendment to the, uh, Municipal Service District. She had a memorandum that came from Hank, tell us that, uh, Kate Burns volunteered to serve on this thing. And we'll be happy to have her do that. And we'll do that by changing the ordinance amendments on the following page. If you look at the bottom, that, now that tells us that we're going to re-describe the membership uh, to a total of six people who shall serve on Municipal Service District Advisory Board with one council member serving as an ex officio member. All six people will serve two-year staggered terms and must be a property owner within the district. Ex officio member does not have to be a property owner within the district. The Municipal Service District Advisory Board members are to be appointed by the Town Council with the planning director, or they designate serving as secretary. Okay, with all that having said and done, the Chair here motion approve the consideration?
So made.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Mayor, I would, I would, uh, ask, would it be improper to make Ms. Burns' term to be four years rather than two to coincide with the way we are on the, on the council? I mean, she, she doesn't have to be a property owner. Why shouldn't she, why should we have to change that in two years?
Yeah. Yeah, all the community people, all for two years. All the rest of them.
I feel like she's got them for...
Okay. Okay, other comments? Other comments? Okay, there being none, all in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? You'll notify, uh, Kate Burns that she's been appointed.
Yeah, I bet she knows.
Thank you, Kate. Okay, we're down now to H, and H deals with, uh, food. And I believe we got Emily here who's gonna make us a presentation on this. Uh, Emily, have you come up and state your name and address for the record, please, so you can, uh, so go into the minutes?
Okay, my name is Emily Enderly, and I live at two oh six Clements Way in Pikeville, North Carolina. And, uh, in, on April ninth, National Library Week starts. And the library would like to celebrate by doing a Food for Fines event to benefit the local organization, My Sister's House. If you're not familiar with that, it is a local, it's the organization that benefits the victims of domestic abuse. Last year, the shelter housed one hundred women and eighty-three children and prepared over six thousand meals. So they, they go through quite a bit of food, we'd like to help them out with that. The way a Food for Fines event works is that any person who has an overdue fine on an H.D. Cooley item, for that one week, they could bring in a non-perishable food item, and each item would equal one dollar off of their fines. This would only apply to H.D. Cooley fines, not to Braswell or any of the other libraries. And it would not apply to lost item fees, because we still want those items back. Um, in addition to helping My Sister's House, it would actually help the library as well, because it would improve our public perception, and it would increase the number of active accounts that we have at the library by freeing up the, the patrons from being banned. And when that happens, you increase the amount of people who are coming in and circulating our materials, you increase the people who are coming to our programs. And just doing a food drive in general would increase civic awareness amongst our patrons. We wanted to gauge how much interest there was from our patrons in participating in a program like this, so we released a survey. And the first question was, "Would you be interested in the H.D. Cooley Library participating in a Food for Fines event?" The answers were eighty percent said yes, ten percent said maybe, and ten percent said no, but please keep in mind that those people may just not have fines. The second question was, "If you do not have fines, would you consider donating during the event?" Ninety percent said yes, and ten percent said maybe. So I think we have a pretty good indicator that we would have strong participation. Uh, that's, that's my presentation. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me.
I think we'll do, just see how it works.
Okay.
I'd like to see guilty show up and bring an offering of peace.
Emily, what is the, uh, dollar amount of our outstanding fines?
Uh, it's somewhere in the twenty-one thousand range.
Good gracious.
Twenty-one thousand?
Yes. We would really like to significantly reduce that number.
How low, how low is this number of an outstanding, and is it growing?
That's a good question. Uh, I'd have to run some reports on how it has been in the past. It's stayed pretty stable since I've been here. So it, I think a lot of the fines are from a long time ago, from accounts that really shouldn't be active anymore. People who have moved on.
Wow. Okay. Okay, you've heard the presentation. Uh, is there any discussion? Chair here motion approve the, uh, activity?
So made.
Second.
Thank you.
Been moved and seconded, approve the activity. All right, everything said and done. All in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, go for it. Okay, the next item, or some budget revisions, we have to talk about some budget amendments. Uh, the first one deals with money we receive for the Hope Initiative, which increases, uh, that, uh, fund by a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, so that's sort of a normal thing that happens almost every month. The Chair here motion approve this budget amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, approve the budget amendments. Any discussion? If there being none, all in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? All right, that's approved. And the next one, budget, no, amendment thirty-one, uh, I had some difficulty with some of the language here. I'm gonna ask Hank to explain that for me. What, what's the fund balance issue?
Oh, sure. Uh, appropriation for fund balance is your revenue line item. Uh, don't, don't get confused about the word, the term fund balance here. That doesn't mean fund balance in the sense of how much money we have as of June thirtieth. You know, the Fiscal Control Act requires us to have our, our budget balance, you know, at all times. So that's the money, that's the line that's gonna ensure that our revenues always match our expenditures. So wherever there's gonna be an overrun in our expenditures, we gotta balance that with revenue. So that's the line item that's gonna show up in. Uh, it looks exceedingly high this year, because that's where you had extra money coming to fund our capital reserve fund on the revenue side, and also the allocation for the fire truck that we purchased. So it, it looks a lot higher than it normally would be, but that's because of a bit offset in the future with reduced expenditure. Uh, the fifteen hundred dollars for the, uh, budget amendment here is for federal drug money. These are, uh, drug seizure dollars that we receive periodically for participation in our, our task force that's, uh, sent back down to us. And since it's money that we don't budget, and we don't know when we'll receive it, we have to bring it before you as a budget amendment to appropriate it for expenditure in our drug prevention line.
With that explanation, uh, does the Chair here motion approve this budget amendment?
So made.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, it's all done. All right, now, so the next item is number four, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Parks and Recreation reports, uh, for this month, that Emma Kahoon's Little Free Library, as you know, that was presented to y'all, is gonna be installed during the month of March at Glover Park. Uh, Athletics is reporting that the Nashville Night at the Mudcats is April the fifth, and tickets are seven dollars, and opening day for spring sports is on April the seventh. Um, we're also doing the Walk with Ease program with the first class starting yesterday with six participants. The class meets every Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday from six fifteen to seven fifteen P.M. Or from ten to eleven A.M. at Glover Park, and it's not too late to still register in that program. They're also working hard continuing to plan for the Creek Side Music Series. Our first concert for this year is going to be on Friday, March the twenty-third. Wingskis is confirmed as a food truck, and Koi Pond has been confirmed as a beer vendor again this year.
Who's playing?
Who is playing? Remember that, Brian? March twenty-third.
I can't remember the names of the band it said, but I think it was classic rock. What type of music did they play?
That's right, I said it, the Koi Pond vendor was gonna be playing, or one of them, yeah. Uh, the library reports that their staff will be attending a library safety training session at Braswell Library on March the twenty-seventh, so the library will need to open a little bit later on this day. Um, this is a, a free training, it's gonna be really helpful to their staff. Um, the town clerk and human resources office, uh, informs us that they'll be holding interviews for the deputy town clerk personnel technician the week of the twelfth here during the month of March. A lot of personnel activity in the fire department, uh, right now going on. Battalion Chief Jason Edwards has informed us that he's gonna be leaving us as of March sixteenth. Uh, he's taking a job with the North Carolina Office of State Fire Marshal. Uh, Brent Kahoon has also resigned, um, is going to work for Fire Connections of Rocky Mount. Uh, we're going through the battalion chief process now, uh, with the second part, um, now gonna be on March the seventh, with the fire chief and human resources director conducting interviews. Uh, the lieutenant's process has been completed, and fire engineers Lee Copege and Andy Joyner, uh, we're glad to announce have been promoted to the position of lieutenant. Uh, congratulations, Mr. Copege in the back. Uh, both of these promotions were effective February twenty-seventh. Chief Joyner's gonna be speaking to, uh, the Community Watch here, um, for the Park Avenue Group on March the eighth at six-thirty here in the council chambers. Uh, we're also expecting that the new fire engine that we've paid for is going to arrive, or scheduled to be delivered the first week of October. Uh, so that's definitely on schedule. I believe our contract had it, had to be here by December, so that's looking good for us. Um, Public Works is reporting that we've, um, obtained pricing and are gonna begin painting our bathrooms here in the library. As you know, if you go in them, they have stains on the walls from different sprayed chemicals. In our last weekly report I sent y'all, there were just a couple of color swatches of what we're looking to do to improve that, but we need, certainly need to work on those aesthetics. Um, Jamie's team is also gonna be working in the cemetery this month, planning, uh, creeping juniper on the hillside facing First Street in an effort to stop erosion. And they've also been very aggressively addressing fire ants. They've identified six hundred fire ant mounds at the cemetery and have successfully addressed half of those, but that problem's really gotten away from us, so they're very aggressively working to combat that issue and make sure that that area's safer, our patrons going out there. Uh, the planning department is gonna be bidding our resurfacing project for this next year, which will be taking place in the Windwood and Regency subdivisions. Uh, they're gonna hold an MSD meeting with the new appointed members, and we're gonna have, importantly, the foreclosure sale of Lumber Street on March the twenty-second. And the attorney's gonna get with me and the finance department about recommending a starting bid for that project, so I know y'all are anxiously awaiting the conclusion of the Lumber Street project after several years. Um, I'd like to thank the mayor for participating and swearing in officers Webb, Lucas, and Battle to our police department. Uh, Sergeant Boykin has resigned and has gone to the Holly Springs Police Department, and Sergeant Tiara Joyner has left to go to the Cary Police Department. Um, upcoming events for March in the P.D., uh, there's gonna be a tree dedication at the, the Arboretum here in Nash County on March the twenty-third at two P.M. And the tree planting is a memorial tree for the Hope Initiative program. Um, we're also going through the promotional process for the sergeant vacancies due to the two sergeant resignations. Um, and in conclusion, I'd like to say that we're looking at the very end of this month to launch our new website. That's been an ongoing effort that we've worked really hard for. Um, I'd, I'd be willing to do a presentation if that's something y'all would like to see at the next council meeting. Um, but it's taken a lot of staff time and effort, and we're proud of the result. We'll eventually be able to roll out once that process is concluded, concluded at the end of this month. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, council comments, we're down to that. Mr. Taylor?
No comments tonight, ma'am. Well, it is. Uh, we've got more people in the audience tonight than, than we normally have, and I would like to personally thank each and every one of you for showing up. Uh, I'd like to see you and, and even more to make it part of your schedule to, to be here at our agenda meetings and our council meetings. And I appreciate you having an interest in what's going on. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say, may we, uh, to recognize Ms. Bass and the, and Captain, uh, and good janitor, which is well. And, uh, as Captain Taylor said, thank you for coming.
Brian, I was gonna ask you about, um, the foreclosure situation. There are other, um, structures throughout the town that are being addressed. We are taking a different route in pursuing that.
Um, it was my understanding from the work session when I gave the presentation of the list that you wanted to pursue abandoned structure ordinance and not foreclosures. And so going forward, I've already talked to Trey Barnett, our attorney, he's gonna familiarize himself with that, so we're taking that route now and not the foreclosure legal process.
Is that route a lot cheaper than what we just went through with this?
I would say. Um, it's just a, it looks a lot like minimum housing ordinance, where you have ninety-day periods between hearings, but it's just under a different section, because minimum housing is geared towards homes that are lived in, and these obviously are not. So it'll be a different process, but it will not be the long-drawn-out foreclosure process that we're talking about right now.
So much more streamlined.
I would say. Yes, ma'am.
I was gonna ask about our next budget meeting. We were gonna have one at the end of March, has that been made out yet?
We could set one for April, but we're not prepared for one in March. We're still waiting on March.
Okay, we still have what, the stuff in the tax office? Jim Renz office?
It'd be nice to have, I mean, we don't know when we'll get them, but we'd like to have revenue projections for the state revenues you had grass for, so we can make decisions about revenues before we start talking about expenditures. Um, we'll...
When will we get those?
Well, we're giving a range starting, you know, at the end of this month, so...
Okay.
You know, we need, we still need to be meeting those. If we, we target sometime early April, uh, we can have a session.
Okay, how do we look the first week in April, folks?
After the seventh would be best for me.
After the seventh.
Okay, it's gonna be going the week of the seventh, the first week?
The first week it'll be gone.
Yeah. And the next week I'll go, or wait and see what this stuff is. Oh, no, yes, I have. Monday or Tuesday, I'm afraid, the next week. I know we normally have later in the week, but I will leave our time, unless we go to the third week.
I am, I'm pretty much complicated the same way, Larry. Looks to me like it'd be, it's gotta be the first week or the last week of April. If that's okay with anybody?
The last week I'm good, I'm clear.
What about April twenty-sixth?
I'm good.
That work? You'll be back by then?
Oh, yes, I'll be back there.
So we'll... What time you gonna do it? All day?
Before we're going that long, or that late, it definitely be all day, may, may require another session close, close to it. I mean, that's a whole, that's definitely a whole day's worth of work, it's just a matter of can we get through it all in one day?
Last year, we had five sessions.
Yeah, we'll have to have one, maybe even two more, see, we don't know what, what our, the General Assembly's gonna do yet. Unfortunately, they don't need it. Okay?
What kind of changes are we anticipating from the General Assembly?
I'm gonna say 26.
I believe he's referring to unexpected, what our revenues, the state and General Assembly controls.
I know that. I haven't read anything about any unusual moves in revenue.
Well, I haven't either, but they're full of surprises to do things at the last minute, and they've been, they've been fucking around with Powell bill for a long time, they've been trying to work.
I think Powell bill will be stable.
And they'll, they'll look at it different ways to reapportion the sales tax stuff, I don't know where that's gonna go, so, just whatever they, they work out. But we're set for 26 April, right?
What time?
What time? 9 o'clock? Works for me.
Thank you. Everybody's good with it?
Okay.
What, what's the location?
I'll meet the boardroom.
At Town Hall?
Yeah, yeah, we're always meeting.
Do we know what time that's going to go to?
Yeah.
Do we know what time it will end, or?
I'd expect all day, since we're waiting that long to meet, both, both long have had revenues and, well, maybe two or three revenues, just depends on what we get from the state, but expenditures, well, long have been calculated, and the department's probably done in the middle of this month.
Okay.
So, it's just a matter of how much discussion there's gonna be around from the council about all of our lineups, but I expect, I expect an all-day session.
What's the possibility of having another one?
We had five last year.
Okay.
And I encourage anybody who's here to come to our budget meetings, they are very important.
And you're certainly welcome, because they're all public meetings, everything's, everything's open. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
That being said, because we all know that in the last couple of meetings that we've had at the Town Hall, we've got cool chairs in to make room for everybody.
Yeah.
Would it be such a bad idea to have it here?
Well, I got a problem with that.
I think that's a better idea, if it's small, we can just go to the conference room over here, if it's, the table's right by, right there.
Well, the reason I like to go over there, because it's warmer in the colder weather, but by that time it'll be okay here.
Temperature should be, should be, should be okay here, yeah.
Let's meet here. Not okay with everybody? We'll meet here. See you at 9 o'clock over to 26th, everybody. Okay? Ms. Burns?
Yes, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out as well, I see some familiar and friendly faces, it is very important that you do, you know, voice your opinion and come and be informed, and so, welcome, thank you for coming again, and we hope to see you again at the next council meetings.
Okay, everybody, everything said and done. Thanks everybody for coming out on a rugged night, looks like winter's never gonna leave us, but it will sooner or later. Okay, everything's said and done, the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
And the brother Benson's motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor, indicate so by saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose no? We'll stand adjourned.